It's six o'clock on the meeting. Just started the meeting. Good evening, Bethel residents. We are briefly in our meeting from yesterday, June 10, 2025, that ended at eight o'clock P. M. I would like to introduce Karla Casey, our moderator. Election Day will be turning it over to Bert Maxfield, our deputy moderator for our June 11th meeting.
Yes, so feeling strongly that we have somebody from outside our community, a neutral person to be the moderator. Um, I'd like to give the guest man to monitor the, um...
Yeah, how can you use the microphone?
One of the first times by my line, but I've been told that my voice was not loud enough. I was too loud in the election yesterday. So feeling strongly that we have a person outside of our community, uh, who is neutral and doesn't have any steam in the angry meetings that are going to be discussed. Um, I think this is to run the position of moderator only to turn it over to, uh, Bert, who has been with us for many years and, uh, fortunately we have him back this year. Bert Maxfield.
Good evening, everybody. Good morning. No. Okay. Well, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, family tonight, and I have a few housekeeping things before we get on the way. The first of them being to, that's kind of better, the first of them being to, uh, give you the results of yesterday's voting, uh, for select board and for assessors and school board. Uh, today Christopher O'Roar received 295 votes, Frank DeLuca 172, Randall Grotons 88, and Andrew Whitney 213. Uh, Fay and Andrew were both elected to serve on the select board, uh, for the next term. The Bethel Board of Assessors for a three-year term was Ron Savage. He was elected with 347 votes. And for a two-year term, Reginald Brown was elected with 401 votes. The school board director at large, there were two of them for three-year terms, Scott Cole won one seat with 259, and Mark Hutchins with 339. And the results of the referendum were as follows. Article one, the budget, yes votes, 374, no votes, 142, and five blank. So the budget was approved by the Bethel voters yesterday. And article two was the process of voting, yes, 362, no, 132, and blank for 26. So the yes votes were the winner in article two. Now, we have a fun thing to do tonight. We have a chance to, uh, award the Spirit of America Award. I think that's a neat thing that towns do to honor different citizens in their town that have done so much for their town, so much for the country and the spirit of America. And tonight, the award is going, I don't know if they're here tonight or not, they are, okay. The award is going to Bob and Carol Pepper. It was a Flatboat. You put her on that page out. It was entered in the class. The Spirit of America Award recognizes Bob and Carol Pepper. Bob and Carol Pepper of the Flatboat have given a great deal to our community and larger nation in many ways over the years. Their service exemplifies the spirit of America. Bob is a career Navy and Army veteran, and after his time in uniform, he returned home to Western Maine where he served multiple terms and many years in office on the local select board, school board, assessing board, planning board, ballot clerk, and county budget committee. Bob's public service also includes a term on the statewide land use planning commission, the countywide assessors review board, and many years of membership in the American community. Not to be outdone, Carol has given much of herself with many years on the school board, American Indian Auxiliary as ballot clerk and Bethel Area Pantry and District Exchange. Our community has been made better placed through their selfless efforts, and we thank them for fulfilling the spirit of America. Thank you. I think that's a very, very meaningful award that, uh, that the towns have been doing for the last fifteen or twenty years. I didn't, but anyway, uh, you've done, you've read the results of the elections, you've given the spirit of America, and now just a few housekeeping things, uh, from my perspective. Um, I would like to have your approval to use the main moderator's manual as our guide for the meeting, and being no objection, we will proceed in that way. Are you okay with the main moderator's manual? Good, thank you. And I don't think there are any tonight, but in any article that does not include an amount of money, please make your motion with the amount of money you wish to have discussed. I will not accept a negative motion or pass over the article motion. And as we all know, I'm sure ordinances may not be amended on the floor. They have to be voted up or down as they're presented at town meeting. And it would be helpful if when you address the meeting, you state your name, and there is going to be a mic floating around, uh, to come to wherever you are, so that we can all hear what you have to say, because it's important and we want to hear it. And everyone will have a chance to speak, but I will not recognize repeat speakers until our first-time speakers have had their opportunity to address the attendees. And one last thing, I won't accept a move the question motion right at the beginning of any discussion. Any article deserves a chance to be discussed, at least briefly. And with that, we'll go to article three. All right. And before we do start, uh, we need to, I need to have a motion that would allow Chair Jackson to speak during the meeting if she's a non-resident. It's been moved, seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Is there anybody else that's a non-registered voter in Bethel that might want to speak tonight? If it comes along, we will have to do the same thing, allow you to speak at that point. So if there isn't any right now, we'll, as that mean arises. Article three, to see if the town will vote to amend code chapter 140, subsection 140-3 applicability. A, this chapter shall apply to all development proposals involving new construction, charge of use, the resumption of a use that continues for more than one year, or substantial enlargement and/or alteration of the following: commercial, retail, industrial, institutional, and recreational buildings, structures and uses, and accessory structures and their uses. Could I have a motion on article three, please? Thank you. You have a second? Okay. So it can move, seconded. Any discussion, questions, or exclamations? Seeing none then, I'd ask you vote. All those in favor of article three is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article three is approved as presented. Article four, to see if the town will vote to amend code chapter five, administration, subsection five dash five five, budget committee. A, there shall be a 12-member and nine-member budget committee, and D, the budget committee shall conduct, or the budget committee shall conduct or conduct its meetings. Could I, could I have a motion on article four, please? Thank you. You have a second? It's been moved, seconded. Any question on article four? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a question about the rationale for the adjustment and whether it does affect the...
I'm gonna need a mic.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Lindsay Gardner, Bethel. Uh, just a question on the rationale for the adjustment from 12 to nine and whether that would impact anyone's current courtesy of the budget committee, whether we're going to reduce current membership or, or...
Would like to...
Thank you for your question. Um, in your, in response, um, this was brought forward to, to the board and hence to the townspeople. It reduces it from 12 to nine. It makes the committee a little bit more nimble, and it gives it an odd number, which is nice when you work with a committee. But yet, with that change, it allows different perspectives from the town to come forward on that committee. To answer your question about if it's going to affect current persons, um, it'd have to be corrected. We have right now one, maybe two vacant seats. Um, so yes, it may affect, um, the terms and the staggering, but the select board has its order two in the, in the code. They will adjust that if this is approved.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further on article four? Good question. If you're all set, I'd ask you for the vote. All those in favor of article four is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article four is approved as presented. Article five, to see if the town will vote to approve the release of an abandoned sewer easement across certain property located on Vernon Street, known as map 25 block 198, owned by Daniel Myers, and the conveyance of certain town property on Vernon Street, known as map 25 block 201A, and formerly used for a pumping station to Daniel Myers in exchange for the town's prior purchase of a portion of lot 198 for the construction of a new pumping station. Could I have a motion, please? Move, remove, any second? It's been seconded, thank you. Any discussion or question on article five? I'm not seeing any then, I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of article five is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article five is approved as presented. Article six, to see if the town will vote to adopt the updated tri-town solid waste interlocal agreement between the towns of Bethel, Hanover, and Newbury. A copy has been posted with the warrant and available at the Bethel Town Office. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. Second, it's been moved, seconded. Any question on article six? Not seeing any. I'd ask for your vote. All those in favor of article six is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article six is approved as presented. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to continue having municipal solid waste, MSW, picked up curbside and at dumpsters serviced by a hauling company at locations throughout Bethel, Hanover, and Newbury, and to raise an appropriate up to $300,000 to pay MSW tipping fee. Note, the customer will pay the hauling company for the curbside and dumpster service. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been moved, seconded. Any question on article seven? Yes, sir.
Michael, President of Bethel. Um, I'm here in favor of keeping this tipping fee for the businesses in this town. The town has always done it. As a business, we pay taxes in this town, and that also includes the transfer station. I feel the town's going to penalize businesses because people are going to use the dumpster service, which we're paying the hauling fee for. Not only that, this affects, um, the elderly people, the retired people in this community that have trash pickup that they also pay for in their, um, taxes. As a business, I already pay $120 a year in taxes, and businesses that have kids in school. One of the services that I do get for my high taxes is the transfer station. Um, we do, as a business, we could all go there and help for free because it's in our taxes. Um, I don't feel the town should penalize us for, um, using the service to do that. And also, I also would like to ask a question. Um, this $120 a ton, we do not do this at the last meeting, I believe, on the 21st. The town also pays a per-ton fee for the transfer station to, um, the dump, and they also pay a hauling fee. I would like to ask what that average fee is per ton for the hauling fee, and I believe that's higher than the $120 a ton.
Okay. Who'd like to take that question? Thank you, Sarah.
So right, right now, we pay $120 a ton for all of the commercial dumpsters that are picked up on, um, that, that businesses and residents have. And if you also have curbside pickup, that is $120 a ton. If you bring your, uh, MSW municipal solid waste to the transfer station, we pay $97 a ton for that particular thing.
If my question asks what is the average cost per ton, because the town also pays a transfer fee to, um, a shipping queue on top of that, that us as a business owners are going to pay. So you pay ninety-something dollars a ton, then you pay a shipping fee.
You pay a hauling fee.
A hauling fee. So what is that hauling fee?
The hauling fee right now until the end of June is $490 a ton. Our new contract, beginning July 1st, is going to be $320 a ton, uh, a haul, and the tipping fee is going to be $97.
Okay. So my, my question is, out of my hauling fee, do you figure on the hauling fees versus the tonnage in the town hauling for the dump, what is the average cost per ton?
I can't tell you what the average cost per ton is. I can tell you in, in 2024, the, the exact amount of tonnage we haul out at the transfer station and the tonnage that we haul from the dumpsters and the curbside pickup. So if you, if you look at the, um, reference sheet that I gave you, the town paid last year in 2024, $302,000 tipping fee for all of the MSW that was in the dumpsters and curbside pickup. At the transfer station, we didn't pay that much. In the budget this year, we took that $300,000 out of the transfer station budget. And if this article is approved to keep the, um, curbside pickup and the dumpster pickup, we will be paying an additional $300,000 that is not in the budget, and that equates to an additional 47 cents on the bill rate.
Okay. But that $300,000 was really deceiving to the residents of Bethel because there's also Newbury and the other towns associated with that. So I believe the actual cost is $172,000. And you state my question on what is your average cost a ton when you figure your shipping fee in there? We went through this in the town meeting, and it's actually higher than what we're paying, $120 a ton. If you add your tonnage and your shipping fees together, you're paying more than $120 a ton. Okay. I have another question. Um, and this is probably going to go back to stock. So as residents and taxpayers of this town, we can go dump our stuff for free, but we choose to use the service. Um, so if we, if all those businesses and retired people and stuff in this town wanted to go dump 200, 2,000, 523 tons of trash at that dump and not use dumpsters, can the town dump, facilitate that, being open three days a week? Can they facilitate hauling that off? Because the town owns the containers that the trucks have to haul that off on, can they even handle the trash that's coming into this town if no one uses the dumpsters?
So Scott and I have estimated what we, uh, believe would be additional, um, additionally taken to the transfer station. Um, we do not believe that anyone who has a dumpster that has a business is going to, to now take that trash to the dump. Uh, if someone has a dumper, dumpster, that's the, the preferred way that they want to dispose it.
The question, the question was, if everybody did, could the dump handle that amount of trash?
We could not handle that amount of trash if all of it came, but we don't anticipate receiving that amount of trash.
Okay. I just feel you're penalizing the businesses in this town, senior citizens in this town. This town has the most money they've ever had, the undesignated funds of $5 million. It usually runs two to three million. The town said nothing in the last few years to even knock down the bill rate, which we used to put a couple hundred thousand dollars a year towards. So I, I'd be in favor of keeping the town, penalizing the businesses in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on article seven? Yes?
Karla Casey of Bethel. Um, I am a senior citizen and as a senior citizen, did a major, uh, renovation at my house. I paid to have the dumpster there and paid to have it hauled away rather than pay my contractor to load it into his trailer and haul it to the, to the dump every time because I was penalized on full terms in terms of using his time and his rate. So I, I was willing to have that dumpster, and I think for me, if I want to have a, uh, do renovation or have some construction done, that's my responsibility to have that built into the, to the cost, and I would leave it to the contractor to build that in and charge me a burden. I just think it's appropriate because otherwise, all of us who are the citizens of the community who, um, for instance, I carry my stuff to the dump. I don't have it picked up, uh, with curbside service. Um, we are then subsidizing those few people who are having, uh, a lot of trash taken to the dump because of the building project. And I think just, that's just part of the business. And the other, the last thing I want to mention is, I understand that Bethel is one of, if, if not the only town, only a handful of towns that don't charge for this. Everyone else in the state, all of the other communities do charge for that, uh, you know, have empty, uh, contractors or whoever, you know, pay a service to have that removed rather than have it just built in. So I think it makes sense for us to get with the, with the program with, as most communities in the state do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
I don't think I need a microphone. Um, I think there's a little confusion on the construction dumpsters. I'm a contractor, I think the board agrees. There's already currently in the ordinance, a bit of building, I believe it's about $25,000 to be hauled. You have to have a dumpster for your construction materials. So I think you're slightly mistaken about construction. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about like the dumpster at my Maruzy Realty office, or, you know, the dumpsters approved, where the dumpsters at the center, the center get the businesses in thousands of the IPA. So if construction dumpsters are already handled in the ordinance, anything above $25,000 is already taken care of. They have to have a dumpster on site, which always do for the most private. Um, but there's will for a burden on the businesses. The businesses that you date that is, I checked the sharing, you know, all my properties, they include in my taxes for the transfer station. So this is a burden on the businesses. It is a burden on the people. You know, the eight-year-old lady that walks the bags out of her, the side of the street in front of her house, she will now have to pay for that, the weight of that trash. She has ten bags, she has to pay a bucking yard of taxes for those ten bags. We've never done it that way. I would like things the way it is. I would be more than yes.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes?
Sue Radway, Bethel. Um, I do not support the consideration of the town paying for the tipping fees, et cetera. What I do believe and do here, um, businesses are paying taxes, residents are paying taxes because everybody is getting benefits of some things and not benefits of others. So if you balance that out, so I'm wondering, and I may not be in the right place to be saying, because at the moment, or asking this, but I see a benefit of the businesses having the support from the town to help them be successful in the day ahead and provide the services and, um, benefits to the citizens. But as a president who takes my own trash, um, I really have a problem paying somebody else to take their trash because it's convenient for them to be able to do that. I also understand that perhaps this has been going on for so long that many of us who didn't even understand that the town was paying a piece of what it costs to pick up their trash at the end of the driveway. Um, I'm thinking, and I'm fairly new resident, I believe I've learned about services and to age around the community, there's got to be a way to think about senior citizens that needs assistance for the garbage. Where it came from, we could help neighbors do that. So I'm not sure that the town tax is needed to pay to empty residents' trash, um, as much as perhaps maybe businesses could have something to do with it. So I don't know that, whether that's a yes or a no still here, or whether there is a method or some way of...
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll say that.
Okay.
Uh, so Andrew Whitney, uh, Karen Bethel, obviously. Um, I tend to agree. I have some of the same questions that Mike and Ron brought up. I think that, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing this eventually, but I do think we need to really ensure that, that this is going to save money, and I have the same question about the tonnage, Mike, that you were bringing up. I think there's potential for this to cost the town more money. I don't think it's likely. I, I, I think it would be foolish to assume that all the businesses are not going to get rid of their dumpsters. I suspect that most of them will keep their dumpsters, but I do think that if the businesses decided to get rid of their dumpsters, now that would be all on the town of Bethel. Uh, the other concern I have with this is the, the number of days that the town, that the dump is open. Um, that's a cost savings to obviously not have it open all the time, but if we do increase volume there, we could potentially have to open the town, uh, Town Delmore, which would increase our costs. Uh, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing this eventually, but I'll vote no on this for the same reason that we don't have all the answers that I think we need to move forward.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just want to clarify, I think some people confuse, it's very confusing. If I rent a dumpster and I'm who said, I paid for the physical dumpster rental, I also paid for the town, uh, excuse me, the trash company to come pick that up. So I'm paying, I get one, no, one, yes, that's not confusing. Yes, Sarah say, I'm paying for that, I guess. Am I right?
So now your dumpster is empty, paid, the emptying the dumpsters paid for by the town. Now we're renting the dumpsters.
Yeah. I paid for the dumpster rental, the physical rental of the dumpster. I paid the company to physically come and empty it. What the taxpayer is paying for is the weight that's in the dumpster. That weight that's in the dumpster, someone else mentioned that, gee, they throw trash and that they don't want, because I choose that dumpster, because the dumpster will be open three days a week. Um, all the taxpayers pay for is the weight. I can bring that weight for free to the dump, but I'm paying because I need a dumpster more than three days a week for business, like the restaurants do. Um, so the dumpster rental and the labor to pick it up, the trucking to pick it up, is covered by the customer. The weight of the trash is covered by the taxpayer. I just want to be sure we knew that. I mean, we had selected it, didn't understand that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ron. Yes?
One more, one more point of clarification. You said you were going to vote no. I believe you meant you would vote yes. If you bid this way, it's just a little bit confusing. So a yes vote, he'd say the same, and a no vote would be changing this.
Right.
Just to clarify.
Thank you. Yes?
From the next one, article, um, you're asking for a scale at the dump. Um, that scale is going to generate, um, last year at Bethel, under the main...
decided to get rid of their dumpsters, now that would be all on the Town of Bethel. The other concern I have with this is the number of days that the town, that the dump is open. That's a cost savings to obviously not have it open all the time. But if we do increase volume there, we could potentially have to open the Town Delmore, which would increase our costs. I'm not necessarily opposed to doing this eventually, but I'll vote no on this for the same reason that we don't have all the answers that I think we need to move forward.
Thank you. Yes, go on.
I just wanted to clarify. I think some people confuse, it's very confusing. If I rent a dumpster at Muhusik, I pay for the physical dumpster rental. I also pay for the town, excuse me, the trash company to come pick that up. So I'm paying. I get one no, one yes. That's not confusing. It's fair to say I'm paying for that, I guess. Am I right?
So now your dumpster is empty. Pay for the, emptying the dumpsters paid for by the town. Now we're renting the dumpsters.
Yeah. I pay for the dumpster rental, the physical rental of the dumpster. I pay the company to physically come and empty it. What the taxpayers are paying for is the weight that's in the dumpster. That weight that's in the dumpster, someone else mentioned that G K's home trash and that they don't want, because I choose that dumpster, because the dumpster will be free this week. All the taxpayers pay for is the weight. I bring that weight for free to the dump, but I'm paying because I need a dumpster worth of three days a week for business like the restaurants do. So the dumpster rental and the labor to pick it up, the trucking to pick it up is covered by the customer. The weight of the trash is covered by the taxpayer. I just want to make sure we knew that. I mean, we had selected it, didn't understand that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes?
One more, one more point of clarification.
Sure.
You said you were going to vote no. I believe you meant you would vote yes. If you bid this way, it's just a little bit confusing. So a yes vote, he'd say the same, and a no vote would be changing this.
Right.
Just to clarify.
Thank you.
From the next one article, you're asking for a scale at the dump. That scale is going to generate, last year it was about $100,000 monthly for construction projects. Sales generated from sales coming up on the next couple of articles is $297,000. That's a product of $114,000. So construction projects, all the dumpster, they must all be there. These are what we pay for. We're talking about trash is picked up as business. Senior citizens, our taxes pay for it to the middle. Are you paying transportation and then transportation? Are a lot of the taxes being paid for us?
Okay. Thank you again. Yes? Thank you. Have motion to move the question. It's been seconded. All favor of moving the question, which means ending the debate. Thank you. Any opposed? We will go right to the question. All those in favor of Article 7, as read, discussed, explained, and talked about, please indicate by raising your hand. All those in favor. Thank you. Any opposed? I think we got a count on. I need some clerks to count. All those in favor, raise it and hold it high, please. Forty? Forty yes. All down. Those opposed? Hold it high, please. Forty to thirty-one. The vote was forty yes, thirty-one no. Article seven has been approved as presented. Article eight, to see if the town votes transfer $100,000 from the town's undesigned fund balance to be used to purchase a steel deck truck scale with steel tread decking, site construction, excavation, concrete foundation, and electrical to perform all tasks for installation. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion from you, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article eight? I don't see any questions, so I will ask you for the vote. All those in favor of Article eight as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article eight is approved as presented. Article nine, to see if the town votes transfer $120,000 from the town's undesigned fund balance to be used to replace the town office roof and the flatboards at the back of the building. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion from you, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any question on Article nine? I don't see any, so I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article nine as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article nine is approved as presented. Article ten, to see if the town votes transfer $125,000 from the town's undesigned fund balance to be used for moisture control maintenance in the town office basement. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been seconded. Thank you. Any discussion or question on Article ten? I don't see any, so I'll ask you for the vote. All those in favor of Article ten as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article ten is approved as presented. Article eleven, to see if the town votes transfer $50,000 from the town's undesigned fund balance for a contingency account to be used for emergency purposes and to be approved by the select board when needed. And again, the select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article eleven? Seeing none, then I'd vote you vote. All those in favor of Article eleven as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article eleven is now approved as presented. Article twelve, to see if the town votes transfer $65,766 from the town's undesigned fund balance to clear the negative balance in the cemetery restoration account reported by the auditors in Schedule G in the fiscal year 23, fiscal year 24 audit in the non-major capital project funds. The auditor and select board recommend approval. Could I have a motion? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article twelve?
Yes.
Yes?
Why, how did that negative balance approve?
How did that negative balance build up?
When the fiscal year 2023 audit was done, we just finished the 24 audit, but when the 23 audit was done, the auditors found that the cemetery reserve account had a balance, a negative balance of that amount. That amount will stay negative in that reserve account until we clear it. So in fiscal year 24 audit, it still shows up there. So we want to move that amount of money from the undesigned fund balance to clear it because you aren't supposed to run a reserve account over. I can't tell you how it became overdrawn.
Got it.
Thank you. Good question. Anything else on Article twelve? If not, then we can move to the vote. All those in favor of Article twelve as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article twelve is approved as presented and explained. Article thirteen, to see if the town votes to raise and appropriate the sum of $738,124 to the administration department. The administration department includes the town manager, the town clerk, the assessor, the finance, planning, and CEO. Fiscal year 25 was $693,083. Again, the select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. What's that?
On motion.
Yes. Oh, yes, sure. It's on the floor. Any question or discussion?
Travis Bojic, member of the planning board. I see that there is a stipend to be included. I would, I mean, I came onto this as a volunteer position. I expect it to be a volunteer position. As such, I'm looking to make a floor amendment to strike the stipend from the article.
So does that stipend have a dollar amount?
I just think that this opens up a can of worms for other departments to start requesting stipends.
Before we have any questions, is there a second to that motion? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. $4,200 is the total budget stipend for the planning board? Okay. So your motion would entail moving $4,200 from this budget account?
Correct.
Which would eliminate any stipends for planning board members?
Leaving the select board as being able to afford the stipend.
Okay. And the assessors?
Correct.
It would be, it would include, now include town manager, town clerk, assessor, finance, and CEO. Any question on the motion, or man? Okay? All those in favor of amending Article twelve by removing $4,200 for stipends, please indicate? Okay, sure.
Sue Dunn, Town Bethel, very recent member of the planning board. I've worked at her six-ish years, much longer than Travis has been on. I think it's been about six months. I can tell you, planning board is a tremendous amount of work. We spend hours, well, some of you don't, planning board, you know. You spend hours and hours doing research, driving around, checking out these slides, looking at different times of day when the traffic is going to be moving through, getting tidbits, getting mosquito bites, slipping and falling in the ice. It's crazy. And we don't get a lot of respect from the townspeople sometimes when we don't bother with the way they want. It's kind of a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. I think that this money is well deserved to cover some of the expenses that these people endure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes?
I agree. I brought a lot of plants for the planning board. It's a lot of work to get it out. They deserve something.
Yes?
Can you just clarify what something is?
What something is?
What is the amount?
Forty-two, forty-two hundred.
Well, no, but like exactly the amount per person, what's the actual amount for a planning board member? Is that just the sum of the board members?
So this is based on a seven-member board, $25 per meeting for each, based on 24 meetings a year. That's $42,000.
$25. Yes.
It often, there are not that many meetings.
No, we went on the high side if there were 24 meetings a year, two of a month, we had to budget for if they were that many. I will add to this, the amount of work that is done by the planning board is a lot of detailed work that has to be looked at. And what I asked the chair to do, and she asked me about this, was to look at all of the other towns in Oxford County to find out what towns paid their planning boards. Some pay their planning boards $100 a meeting. This was on the low side of 25, just to add to the discussion.
Thank you. Anything further on proposed motion? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor? I meant, I'm sorry. The motion to amend. Yes. All those in favor of the motion to amend, which would eliminate $4,200 for stipends for the planning board, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed to eliminate it. Thank you. You have defeated the proposed amendment and will go back to the main motion. Article thirteen, I'll read it once more, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $738,124 for the administration department. The administration department includes the town manager, town clerk, assessor, finance, and planning, and CEO. Could I have, all those in favor of Article thirteen as presented, please indicate? Thank you. Those opposed? Article thirteen is now approved as presented. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,867 for the animal control department. Last year it was $14,829. School board and budget, the select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article fourteen? Not seeing any, then I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen as read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article fourteen is approved as presented. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $673,865 for the police department, the Oxford County Sheriff's Services. Last year it was $573,450. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion on Article fifteen? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article fifteen? Yes, Your Honor?
It's necessary, but it's $100,000 for the last year with ten. Now, this is four decades, $160,000 or something like that. Plus, what a lot of people don't realize, we already pay our county taxes. Now, how much is that proportion of the police in the county on the county tax side? So we're not only paying this money, we're paying our portion of the county tax as well. It's a lot of money. At some point, it's got to come to an end somewhere. It's a lot of money. And I know they need town a lot, and I would expect if this was made by county, I know the board should start to communicate about it. We should look at call log, and if they're not in Bethel, if they're handling other towns now, we should be getting reimbursed for that time in the call log. That's a lot of money.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else? Yes? Harvey, you have used the mic, please. Mike, you do use the mic.
My question is, is what is the Oxford County budget? It seems like, if I remember correctly, it would be about 130 of the budget for these officers.
So going from recollection, and I can take the time later to look it up in the Oxford County budget, which is online at the Oxford County website. So anybody can look it up. The revenue offset that they put in for Bethel is $547,000, which is the amount that we are currently building. It isn't directly answered your question, but it's what I can offer you.
So, and I understand it's necessary for now, but I agree with Ron sometime this has to come to an end because I look, I look at the call logs for Newry, Bethel, this whole area, Greenwood, we're already paying for county service. And if you look at the call logs, there's always a police officer within 15 minutes of this town. This is a pretty big hefty sum of money. And if I remember correctly, the Oxford County total budget is around 1.8 million. So we're paying about a third for four police officers. And we're not getting a dedicated service because if they have a call in Newry, they go to Newry. And I feel that maybe you should talk to Newry about paying some of this because they're getting a better response time when I'm dying, and so is Greenwood, so is everybody. Bethel's foot in the bill for a better service for the town to watch.
So you make very good points. And a conversation with Newry is something that I hope my fellows at board members would join in, and have something like that in the future. What we are paying for is enhanced patrol service. So we get a basic minimum, we get investigative services, we get those services with our fees that we pay to the county. What we're paying about that is for that 24-hour patrol services on top of it, for deputies to carry that. There is mutual aid, I mean, those services don't stop. There is mutual aid, so when they leave, another backup is supposed to come into our area. The whole goal, the contract that we have with them, is that Bethel doesn't want to pay anymore, and we also want to be fair to the other towns in the county. We don't want them to pay anymore. We do have a meeting scheduled, yet another meeting scheduled with the county administrator and the sheriff. We'll be having a workshop on five o'clock on next Wednesday to continue our questioning of the line by line that they are charging us. For me personally, I think I can speak for at least three members of the board, that we are not satisfied with the line items that they have produced for us. And we are asking for that detail, and we will be asking them face to face next Wednesday.
I've looked through that line item, but it seems like, to me, they're dealt with definitely a lot of things that we probably just not be paying with. It sounds like you guys probably.
Thank you.
To follow up on that, Mike, the county budget, the total tax assessment of a county budget is over $15 million. That ours for Bethel is 1.2 million. We pay Oxford County 1.2 million. That's our assessment to Oxford County. Their assessment for all towns in Oxford County is over 15 million, so. Dixfield, I believe Mexico is going to sign with them. And right now, Paris is looking at it, but there hasn't been any decision made. The way they're doing it this year. The way they're doing it this year, um, in the past, the, the individual towns all had a different assessed value, uh, different amount for each deputy assigned. This year, they're charging per deputy, doesn't matter what town has their service, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars.
So, under the county, what about, so why would that, their response?
We got a program on, and we're still playing. Okay, thank you.
So, I, I guess to piggyback on what Michelle said, we've been talking with them now for a year and a half. We really don't get a lot of the answers we want. We have another meeting scheduled, um, for June.
Question up that?
Darren Kirk, Bethel. It boils down to, we, yes, Ron, it's a ton of money, a ton of money. We either pay it to have twenty-four hour coverage, or we don't pay it, and we follow the line with all the other county, all the other towns and the counties. That means the deputy comes out at seven AM, and he goes to sleep at midnight. Now, if you as taxpayers are willing to wait for a deputy to come from Peru, can't mine it, then hire him like you. Um, that's a long time to wait, so it's kicking in the door. So, when we chose to eliminate the town police department, we lost operational control, we lost, um, finance control. So, it's either pay seven hundred thousand plus dollars for twenty-four hour coverage and have a police officer here, or don't, and you won't have a police officer here twenty-four hours. You will have them about ten hours a day. It, it's a simple vote. I know, I'm glad what you're doing, Michelle, because it needs to be done. He needs to have his feet held to the fire. But I'm talking as coverage for the town. The cost is big, the job is big, the service is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes.
Um, I appreciate all the discussion, um, because as we've heard, it's a tremendous amount of money, and I'd love to hear that there's a meeting next week to discuss it. And I'm curious, why are we voting on this sum tonight, um, with the upcoming meeting? It feels like we're kind of giving away our leverage if we're already approving a hundred thousand more, so I'm just curious kind of what the thought process is on voting tonight versus waiting to actually have, you all have this really important discussion with the sheriff.
Thank you.
We can have a meeting next week that's not going to change this amount. We already told them. We're, we're going to be having a conversation to try to understand how these numbers come into play, but this number is not going to change. We're voting on it so that we don't have to have another special town meeting for this.
Okay, so to, to kind of Ron's point, um, what is the end of the increase? Like, if the sheriff's office isn't being responsive, it sounds like it's a really challenging discussion and like negotiation. Like, what is, what is the end? If it's a hundred thousand this year, how do we know that may not be a hundred thousand years to come? Because it sounds like unfortunately, the sheriff isn't cooperating with the town in terms of that negotiation. So, what is sort of our role in helping form that number in the future?
We're not going to reform that number. I'm talking loud because I don't have the microphone. We don't form that number. They tell us what it costs them for each officer, and, and that is how, that is how much we have to pay. That's really how this works. So, um, they have included all of the individual cost, and this is the number.
So, to clarify, it sounds like if we vote no tonight on this huge sum of money, that actually may put pressure on the sheriff to negotiate with the town. I mean, that's what I'm interpreting as kind of maybe our own tool in order to actually have some leverage with the sheriff. Obviously, that comes with a risk, as we heard from Darren, but it seems like by voting no, we may actually be able to have a negotiation with them, because otherwise, it doesn't really seem like a way to have a real, um, negotiation with the sheriff.
We've been having several negotiations throughout a year and a half, and, um, we will, our coverage will end July first if this is not approved. Today is the eleventh. There's no way we're going to get back after that meeting to a special town meeting, and so this town could be without coverage July first if that happens.
Okay, thank you so much for that, for the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my question is up that.
Just, just to clarify, if.
You're going to need to use the mic, please.
So, just so we're all aware, if we decide to vote this down, we will not be not covered. The county has to cover us whether we vote for this to come or not. So, the threat of us having a deadline of June thirtieth is not accurate. We will always be covered by Oxford County. It is part of our original taxes. I agree, we are in a very hard circumstance right now. I mean, I'm representing Bethel Rescue, I work for Bethel Rescue, I get frustrated when we're waiting thirty-plus minutes for an officer. Thirty-plus minutes. At some point, a real discussion needs to happen, because they hear what we're saying a year and a half. No, this has been being discussed for three, four, and five years. So, we really need to have a serious discussion about what we want for our town.
The county will still cover us like they do every other town that does not have, uh, police service. We will not have the additional coverage that we've been paying for, so the dedicated four, um, deputies will go away, and the call, it could take up to a half hour for the call, um, to, to be answered. So, Amy's right in what she said. I just wanted to make sure that you understand that it's the coverage that we have now that will go away July first.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I took off, I took off a point, and I think it's right. Sharon, do you know what percentage of the county budget that we paid them, you look figure, what percentage of that is fully covered? That one. Okay, but my question is, that would be?
I don't know. We would have to look at the budgets. We would have to look at the budget to see what, what amount the sheriff's budget actually is, uh, and see, so I.
Well, we know how many, right? It's a, I mean, I mean, or do you think you take point about some of that, that's two hundred and fifty thousand, and you've been added, right, so what's being asked in the kitchen? And I'm direct and I'm straight.
The sheriff's budget for last year was two point six million.
Right, but how much of that is the police coverage?
Please bring the conversation through, uh, see what you can say.
The spending to both that happens, uh, police coverage.
Thank you.
If I could show the Oxford County numbers.
Just a minute, please.
So, the sheriff's budget for 2025, of the fifteen million plus that we've been talking about, is two point five eight eight four ninety-one of the Oxford County budget. We would have to do some fast math to see what percentage of that is the percent to the taxes, and then we would have to do some other fast math as to Bethel's percent of that.
Is that what you had, Travis?
Um, probably internet. Um, I don't know if I, I think I'm looking at probably the same thing that Michelle was just over there.
Okay. So, I don't know, we've got an answer for you, sir.
Well, it's a line share with the points of the essay, but at least obviously, if the county expands, that's not going.
Mm-hmm.
That word?
About five, six, five, six, that's one thousand.
Okay.
It's all detective when they ask you if that's a mine, that's a condition, all the data in our county assessment.
That's the point. Gotcha. Yeah, okay, gotcha. Yeah, thank you. Ron?
I'll be very grateful. Can you imagine owning a convenience store, and you gotta, you're paying someone to be their cashier, right? Twenty-four, seven. The store down the street, that person's place he works, and your employee runs down the street to come to their cashier. That's exactly what's happening with the cops in this town. They're going to Albany, they're going to Greenwood, they're going to Woodstock, they're going to Gilliard, they're going to Newry, they're going to Hanover. They're leaving our town, and we are paying for this expanded coverage. They're leaving our town. I hope the selectmen understand they're taking our money and leaving this town for a service where we're paying for an extended service. Those call logs will tell them when they leave our town, they're not backfilling those officers, they're leaving the town. So, the selectmen should go to them and say, if you're leaving our town, based on the call log time that you're gone, we want a credit back. It makes no sense the way it's working from currently.
I have, I have under thirty deputies. The twenty twenty-five budget deputies are listed as a line item of two million, one hundred, five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Thank you.
From the county, yes.
Is that, is that what you said?
Um, I was just wondering if you happen to have what the increase was from 2023 to 2024? I remember having this conversation almost exactly last year, um, and I also remember that number being, uh, I think even higher than what this is. So, with no change in services and just another increase, um, that seems like a lot of money that we have been paying to Oxford County Sheriff over the last few years. I understand this is a really tricky situation to navigate, but we just gave them, I want to say it was something like two hundred thousand increase from last year. So, I, I'd love to see if my memory stands correct in what it was last year, and then we're going to pay them another extra hundred thousand this year.
Darren, you?
Yes, just to clarify, the meeting that the board's going to have, I don't believe there's an ounce of leverage in that meeting. Sheriff's Office does not care whether they have a contract here or not, they provide it if we ask. The numbers that they are giving us is exact numbers of cost. Now, how they're billing those costs, that's what you're going to find out. Under state law, they cannot charge us more than actual cost, and they cannot charge us less than an actual cost. So, what they're giving for that number, that seven hundred grand, is the exact cost. Now, we need to find out what are those costs? And the other thing is, when people start talking about county taxes, please understand that Bethel's county tax is not just for the sheriff's department. It covers the sheriff's department, it covers the jail, dispatch, registry of deeds, all, you know, it's not just law enforcement. So, when you, yeah, courts, so you need to look at that number with a little bit of shade to understand that it's not all the guys and crews are driving around covering a lot of assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. How are we doing? Anything?
No question to move the question.
I gotta, I gotta remove the question, hold a second.
Can I start?
No, not until we've voted on it, so, so, um, all those in favor are moving the question, ending the discussion? Okay, thank you. Those opposed? We have moved the question, and we have to move on. Sorry about that.
I worked there, so maybe next time we'll, we'll get there sooner.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for the fire department.
Oh, I think.
Article seventeen, thank you for that. So, we do have article fifteen that has been read and discussed and explained, and you're ready for the vote on article fifteen? Yes, okay, thank you, sorry for the mess up. All those in favor of article fifteen that is read and discussed, please indicate. Yep, I will. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for the police department. Oxford County Sheriff's Services, fiscal year twenty-five, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars is recommended by the school board and the budget committee. All those in favor of article fifteen is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? We got a count. Okay, all those in favor, please hold on. Forty, yes, thirty-eight, no. Article fifteen has been defeated. I mean, I think I'll go now. My sincere apologies. Article fifteen has been approved. I guess, I was too focused, but not on the majority. Article sixteen, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for the fire department. Fiscal year twenty-five is three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on article sixteen? Yes?
Article sixteen, and we have a question on article fifteen.
We could have it. No, we can't, we, we already had the vote, the only way we could do it is to move to, uh, ask those present if they wanted to go back and revote it out. That's the only way we can do it. We have, we have, what we have on the floor? Yes. Let's deal with, let's deal with this one. We are voting, we are talking about article sixteen, and we're ready, we have voted on fifteen, article sixteen. All those in favor of article sixteen is read, please indicate. Those opposed? Article sixteen, the fire department budget, has been approved. Now, we've been asked if you want to go back to article fifteen and re-vote article fifteen. I have a motion to that effect, has it been seconded? Then moved and seconded to go back to article fifteen, which we can do. All those in favor going back to article fifteen, please indicate by raising your hand. Those opposed? We are going to move ahead with article seventeen. What, what, yes, you mean, wasn't it? Article seventeen. Yeah, yeah, that's what you want. She wants to know if we can vote it again because it moved ahead too quickly.
No.
I don't know. Are you content with the vote on 15 and 16? Okay. Thank you. I gotta shape up those. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $617,849 for the ambulance department. Fiscal year 25 is $473,356,000. It's an approved recommendation. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 17? Not seeing any then? There we go, okay.
Again, a big, big jump on like an explanation or justification for that?
No, here, you don't hear me.
No, you gotta go to the line.
How about now? Can you hear me now? All right. So, um, there's a few things that contribute to this. Um, among them, we are looking to move our night stipend, which is currently $90 for a person to cover a night shift, which works out to around $7. And we're looking to move that to a more competitive wage with area services to $210 a night. The closest service to us that does business sort of the way we do, which is not to pay by hour but to pay a stipend that night. Um, it's Stonemun Rescue and they're currently paying $200 a night. So, we literally have people right now on our service who live within the community or have in the past been taking night shifts here going to Stonemun to cover night shifts. So, we're looking to try and retain those folks, um, within our own community. We're also asking for increases to the hourly rates for our, um, folks that are pulling per diem shifts in order to make those competitive and keep folks here. At the request of the board, I, um, had looked at wages from a variety of services and tried to find what sort of the average wage was. And the board wanted to go a little higher than that to try and retain staff and stay ahead of the curve. So, that played a part in this. Um, additionally, last year at this town meeting, you all voted for a, um, paid chief's position to be part of the budget. When that budget was created, three of your day shifts per week were going to be covered by that position. And because of, um, that position and bill, this proposal and this budget would put the money back into the per diem line in order to cover those three shifts per week, um, that weren't covered under the previous one in the traditional way. There are some other smaller things where we need to pay for a service agreement for our cops and the ambulances. So, because our previous agreement is expired, um, does that give you enough flavor?
Thank you. Darren?
First, it's our ambulance service, people. I'm going to need an ambulance way before I need a cop, I'll tell you that. And everything he's done has been correctly. He's run the department for longer than I can remember. He knows what he's doing, he's known how to spend money, just like Mike Yogi does with the fire department. We need to have the confidence in those leaders to run it correctly. But the question I have is, didn't we pass that last town meeting, the higher rescue chief? Where did that go? That was passed in the town meeting, I recall. As part of that budget?
So, what was passed at last year's budget was appropriation for the monies. We don't actually, the town needed to appropriate monies for a department. And in that budget was proposed full-time area position. There was further questions, um, to be looked at and procedures and such to be looked at. And also in their code, the, um, right now, the code is for the officers who are chosen by that they're rescue. They're, they're not profit. So, we have to look to change the code to have it become such a department as we saw no departments in, in the town. But what you voted on was appropriation of monies, not actually positions. That's, according to code, goes back to the stock.
Thank you. Yes? Oh, okay. I need a name so we can vote to allow. Violet Howe? Could I have a motion to allow Violet Howe to speak at tonight's meeting? On, uh, second? On favor? Thank you. Okay, Violet.
I just want to speak briefly about this. In the past, I believe, well, since I've been there, night shifts have been extremely underwritten by the community. Our call lines haven't been as much as they are currently for night shifts and we would get, we would $9 a night and get our hourly call. How many of you guys would go into a ship to a night shift for $90? You can tell by the time outside your bed, go sit somewhere else to do that. Not many, we've been losing that. We have a lot of, okay. But, um, I am one of those people who will go to strong. I prefer working that much, but that's not my mindset. And this is important to a lot of our people who have been here for a long time. They kind of like sun that up and have their time in Apple to work those $90 night shifts or past, even since I've been there. I think that this is well deserved and ours sometimes a long time and we do take those out of crisis. So, I think that this is well.
Thank you. Anything further on Article 17? Yes?
I would just like to say that, um, every member of our service is a very, um, hard worker and they're put into circumstances that most people on a daily basis never see. And we hope actually that you never do. My question is about the chief position. You guys had a year, a year to change comb, to look at it, to decide what you wanted. The monies were appropriated. I still don't understand why that wasn't done. I don't understand why the town didn't feel that that was a good resource. The monies were appropriated. You guys chose not to do it. My other question is, it went through the budget committee as a wage. So, I still don't understand why we never used those wages as they were appropriated. I recommend that we all vote this budget because we do need our emergency services, rescue and fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on Article 17? Not seeing any then? I would ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 17 is read and discussed, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 17 is approved as presented. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $592,473 for the solid waste department. Fiscal year 8/25/955. The select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Seconded? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 18? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 18 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 18 is approved as presented. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $781,859 for the public works department. Fiscal year 25 was $768,710. It's, uh, recommended by both boards. Could I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 19? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 19 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 19 is approved as presented. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,965 for the town office facility. Last year was $25,585. It's a recommended amount. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 20? Not seeing any then? Again, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 20 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Article 20 is approved as presented. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $27,460 for the fire station facility. Last year was $29,175. Both boards recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 21? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 21 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 21 is approved as presented. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,300 for the town garage facility. Last year was $17,300. Both boards recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded. Any questions on Article 22? Not seeing any then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 22 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 22 is approved as presented. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $19,670 for the ambulance building facility. Last year was $19,395. Both boards recommend it. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 23? Not seeing any then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 23 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 23 is approved as read. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for the general assistance. Fiscal year, uh, last year was $4,000. Both boards and committees recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 24? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 24 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 24 is now approved as presented. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $77,344 for the recreation department. Last year was $75,220. Both boards recommend it. Could I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 25? Seeing none? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 25 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 25 is approved as presented. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,007 for Injeline Park. Last year was $14,320. It's a recommended amount. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 26? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 26 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 26 is approved as presented. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,735 for the fountain, park and cemetery. Last year was $18,030. It's recommended by both boards. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 27? Not seeing any then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 27 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 27 is approved as presented. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,500 for the Bethel Library. Same amount as last year. It is recommended as well. Could I have a motion on Article 28? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 28? Seeing none again? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 28 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 28 is approved as presented. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the museums of the Bethel Historical Society operations. Last year was the same amount. It is recommended by both committees. Could I have a motion on Article 29, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 29? Not seeing any then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 29 is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 29 is approved as presented. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600 for the museums of the Bethel Historical Society for a band for the July 4th picnic. Last year was the same amount. This article is approved by both boards, recommended by both boards. Could I have a motion on Article 30? Thank you. It's been seconded. Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 30? Seeing none then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 30 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 30 is approved as presented. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the food pantry district exchange. Last year was $19,520. It's recommended by both committees. Could I have a motion on Article 31, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 31? Not seeing any? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 31 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Article 31 is approved as presented. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 for project graduation. It was the same last year. It is approved, is recommended by both boards. Could I have a motion on Article 32? It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any question on Article 32? Seeing none? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 32 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 32 is approved as presented. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the age-friendly community initiative. Last year was $1,000. The article, the budget amount is recommended. Could I have a motion on Article 33, please? It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any question on Article 33? Seeing none? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 33 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 33 is approved as presented. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for seniors' parks. Last year was $4,000 and that both boards recommend approval for this year. Could I have a motion on Article 34? Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 34? Not seeing any then? I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article 34 is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 34 is approved as presented. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,900 for community concepts. Last year was the same. It is recommended to approve. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 35? Yes, sir? Oh, okay. All those in favor of Article 35 is presented, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article 35 is approved as presented. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $52,200 for municipal property and property insurance. It was $45,100 last year. This amount for this year has been recommended to approve. Could I have a motion on Article 36? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article 36? Yes? Yes?
What was the increase in length?
What was the increase caused by from forty-five thousand to fifty-two thousand?
There was some length change here, but overall the cost, there was an increase in the insurance cost.
What were the lengths of the changes?
Oh. They were minor infractions with vehicles that covers under that.
Anything further? Any further questions on Article thirty-six? Seeing none, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-six is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article thirty-six is approved as presented. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for employee benefits. Last year it was six hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The list you can see there, both, those boards recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article thirty-seven? Yes?
How many employees use the health reimbursement and tax full-study plan?
We are not going to have that this coming year because we changed insurance policies. We went from, we went to a better insurance policy with the premiums were less, so we didn't, the benefit plans were eliminated. They were, the benefit, the health reimbursement and the flexible spending plan were put in when the town had a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, and it was actually the fifth lowest insurance plan that was offered. Now they're being offered the best plan, and the insurance premiums are less. They changed their whole structure on coverages. So by eliminating the health reimbursement and flexible spending plans, going to the new plan with better coverage, we have savings.
Thank you.
Anything further on Article thirty-seven? If not, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-seven is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article thirty-seven is approved as presented. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the airport department. Last year it was three hundred and five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This recommended, this amount is recommended, but I have a motion, please. Been moved and seconded. Thank you. Any questions on Article thirty-eight? Seeing none, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-eight is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article thirty-eight is approved as presented. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and two hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for capital improvements. Last year it was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. You can see the list of capital improvements as I budgeted, but I have a motion, please. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article thirty-nine? Not seeing any then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-nine is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article thirty-nine is approved as presented. Article forty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and spend the overlay generated during the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year to pay for tax abatements. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been seconded. Moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty? Yes?
Yeah, what's the total non-overlay effect?
Any question?
How much is the overlay?
Yeah, I think Bob was asking how much is the overlay. We don't have an overlay number for the coming year because the tax commitment is set in September, so we'll have a new overlay number at that time. The current overlay number is forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. That was set when the tax commitment was set in September of twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Anything further? Not seeing anything, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty is approved as presented. Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board or the town manager, acting in concurrence with said select board, to accept and expend on behalf of the town federal and/or state funds which may be received from time to time in the form of grants or for any other purpose, including but not limited to municipal revenue sharing, local road assistance, state aid for education, state aid per capita, civil emergency funds, snowmobiling registration money, tree growth reimbursement money, general assistance reimbursement, community development grant, economic development administration grants, federal emergency management administration grants, northern border regional commission grants, and the U.S. Fire Administration grants, and to act in any way relative thereto. Could I have a motion, please? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-one? If not then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-one is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-one is approved as presented. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to waive the automatic foreclosure of a tax lien mortgage by reporting a waiver of foreclosure at the registry deeds in which the tax lien certificate is reported prior to the expiration of the right of redemption pursuant to Title thirty-six, MRS A subsection nine forty-four, upon finding by the select board that ownership of the property that is subject to the tax lien mortgage would be contrary to the town's best interest. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-two? Yes, sir.
I'm going to assess a little more, but haven't seen any notice of the rate that the town charges for going for taxes. The draft community is wrong. The state does have a minimum, I understand that. And sometimes do charge for us when the state recommends. I know guilty, but I'm not saying the best to show it, but I think we ought to at least know what they're charging people with later on their taxes.
So the question that Bob is asking is what is the interest rate on dividend property taxes? And the town through the code has given the authority to set that with the select board. Select board took that action last meeting, and the percent, and you are correct, it's governed through the state, and that's at seven and a half percent.
The number that we don't, in past, I don't mean to leave out the volume, that's why there's question, but all that good was walking the code.
That's, that's correct. Through your code, it's in the code that gives that authority to the town. You all sat in the jet and gave that authority to the select persons. Yep.
Thank you. Good question. Can you read your vote on Article forty-two? All those in favor of Article forty-two is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-two is now approved as presented. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to make final determinations regarding the closing or opening of roads for winter maintenance pursuant to Title twenty-three, MRS subsection twenty-nine fifty-three. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-three? I don't see any, so I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-three is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-three is approved as presented. Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to establish the rate of interest at three point five percent for those who have received an abatement or have overpaid their taxes for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, pursuant to Title thirty-six, MRS A subsection five oh six A. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-four? Not seeing one then, then I would ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-four is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-four is now approved as presented. Article forty-five, to see if the town will permit the tax collector or the designated to waive unintentional tax interest payment shortages in an amount not to exceed five dollars. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-five? Not seeing any then, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article forty-five is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-five is approved as presented. Article forty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed and to pay no interest on those prepayments in accordance with Title thirty-six, MRS subsection five oh six. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-six? Seeing or hearing none, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-six is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-six is approved as presented. Article forty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to spend unexpendited fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and any other previous years capital improvement road funds to fund remaining projects on the road improvement list. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-seven? Yes?
I guess we did, this is giving a lot of latitude to our town fathers. The things are always spent in the past. You've had town meetings sometimes when they get a lawsuit to address it. So I'm not sure the people here realize that this does get a bit of so much lighter to, maybe they'll hear a little more discussion on it. It just seems so... Sick like a blind chat.
Thank you.
This article, it does not apply to any overdraft accounts. What it applies to if we have this situation happen this past year where the road work was not completed that was appropriated last year and completed in this spring, so it's carrying the balance over to the next year to complete the project. We have the money. It's not, it's not money that is overstated.
Good. Thank you for that. Anything further on Article forty-seven? Seeing nothing then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-seven is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-seven is approved with minor opposition. Article forty-eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the franchise fees received from the cable companies to Western Hills Access Television, WHAT, to broadcast local content and continue to keep the station running for the benefit of the greater community. Could I have a motion, please? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-eight? Seeing none then, I'd call for your vote. All those in favor of Article forty-eight is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-eight is approved as presented. Article forty-nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred percent of the state snowmobile refund to the Greenstock Snow Sports Snowmobile Club for the purpose of maintaining the snowmobile trails connecting West Bethel to Ryan Pond and beyond. Such maintenance is to be performed only with the landowner's permission and only on trails that are open for public use. The estimate of income is a thousand dollars. Could I have a motion on Article forty-nine? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article forty-nine? Seeing none then, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article forty-nine is read, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article forty-nine is approved as presented. Article fifty, to see if the town will appropriate from undesignated fund balance the overdrafts to town accounts as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article fifty? Yes?
Do we have a number?
Do we have a number?
Right now, we're not looking at any overdrafts. We really don't know if there will be until sometime in July after the fiscal year closes. But right now, we're looking okay.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Anything further on Article fifty? Seeing nothing then, I'd call for your vote. All in favor of Article fifty is read and explained, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Article fifty is approved as presented. Article fifty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from its undesignated fund balance to reduce the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six property tax commitment. Select board and budget committee recommend approval. Could I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded. Any question on Article fifty-one? Not seeing any? Yes?
How much is in the fund balance now?
How much is in the undesignated fund balance?
At the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four audit, it was five point five million.
Thank you. Anything further? Not seeing any other questions, I'd ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article fifty-one is read and explained, please indicate. Thank you. Those opposed? Article fifty-one is approved as presented. Article fifty-two, to see if the town will accept estimated revenues, including but not limited to federal, state, local, non-property tax revenues and undesignated donations to reduce the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six property tax commitment as described below. You can see the list, and that list totaled one million six hundred and four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Could I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded. Any question on Article fifty-two? Seeing none, then I'd ask you to vote. Thank you. Those opposed? Article fifty-two is approved as presented. And I will accept the order for adjournment. All in favor of adjournment? Thank you. Thank you for your patience with me.